Let's start right here. Young man, you want to give your name? And we're gonna go all up and down.
No, you can say it in your seat.
Pull it right off, then they can pass it right on.
Yeah, you can pass it around, yeah.
My name's Curtis from Park 3250. I'm a of late also in 532, and that's pretty much it.
Pass it along.
Just pass it along.
I pretty much go to Walls Elementary.
Okay, pretty much.
My name's Aubrey, and I go to Walls Elementary.
My name is Will, and I go to Davie, and that's all.
I'm Sam.
And last name?
Sam Luthman, and I go to Davie Elementary.
Pass it back.
I'm Jacqueline, and I go to Davie Elementary.
I'm Tyler Cooper, and I go to Walls Elementary.
I'm Sam Amadeo, and I go to Walls Elementary.
I'm Colin Packer, and I go to Holden Elementary.
I'm Wyatt Ashton, and I go to Davie Elementary.
I'm Evie Matthews, and I go to Walls Elementary.
I'm Lily Matthews, and I go to Fruitstown Elementary.
I am Nick, and I go to Walls Elementary.
This is our lion, a kindergartner.
Super, congratulations. How many of you are gonna get your Eagle Award? Who's all gonna work for their Eagle Award?
There we go, get those on.
That's a lot of hard work to get done before you're 18 years old, but keep to the road, you'll get it. All right, we're gonna get started. Finance Committee. Tracy, Finance Committee.
Yep, so we have approved the credit card policy.
Yes, Dave Coffey couldn't be with us tonight, but he and Hope and Brian, Brian is somewhere amongst the troop. There he is. But Hope offered to kind of carry the conversation on this. It's a new administrative policy for us. We've, we see the advantage of having a controlled mechanism to use credit cards for those kind of purchases that come up that fit within the parameters of the policy we're approving, and so we think there's value to it. We just hadn't done it, and now we're ready to go ahead and move forward with that pending your approval, so that the departments have a little more latitude with what they can, how they buy things.
And actually, the General Assembly, Ohio General Assembly passed House Bill 312, which requires the city prior to February 1st, if we are going to use credit cards or other types of credit accounts to actually have our council pass a policy. That policy needs to have certain things in it. That is, the positions and people who are allowed to use credit cards, the, a procedure on, on the types of receipts and how an employee is to present information to the Finance Department of what they have bought on those credit cards. There's also, we have a very long list, if you notice, of things that are not permitted to be bought with a city credit card. Also, a procedure on if it's lost or stolen, and what we do if an employee does use it inappropriately. Those are, those are the highlights of the things that House Bill 312 requires us to have in the policy, and if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Oh, sorry, question? Heidi?
Right next to you, Heidi. Chairman.
Who is not allowed to use it? I mean, I look at...
Well, and we, when I was working with Brian... Okay, I will tell you who's not allowed to use it. Is our, if the Finance Director is not going... Finance Director is not going to have and keep physical control of all the cards, which we are not here. I, we don't believe that that's going to be doable, because Park and Rec uses it a lot, Fire uses it a lot. Then we have to have another position in the city that will work with council and come to council and, and give you reports quarterly. That person is not permitted to use a credit card, and that person will be Brian, or the controller.
Thank you. Gwen?
Do we have, just to catch me up to speed, in case I missed it, do we, do we currently have like an audit process in place to double check these purchases? Or some kind of, either an external audit, or some kind of supervisory audit to double check?
Yes, but Brian can give you...
There is an annual external audit, which does random sampling of all those kind of procedural controls. But I'll let Brian, he can probably, he lives and breathes it every day, so...
Hello, yes, there is an annual audit process. The state auditors are doing our audit right now, and this is definitely something that is in their Ohio Compliance Supplement, which is what they use, well, they pull expenditures in general anyway, and they also have what's called an Ohio Compliance Supplement, and this is one of their items on that checklist. And they're making sure this policy is passed, and they are gonna be pulling sample expenditures from this policy that are credit card-type purchases. And they're gonna be reviewing those, make sure there's itemized receipts, and we're not paying taxes on them. Appropriate people are using them, there's no misuse, personal use. Alcohol's a big thing they're looking for. And so that will definitely be a part of the annual audit process. And passing this policy is also required. If we don't pass this policy, then that'll be an automatic write-up in the audit as well. So they've been talking to us about that. Is there anything else?
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
John?
Is this gonna be a card that is paid clear monthly? And also, is it gonna be a card that will have financial rewards for using it?
Okay, so this policy here is kind of twofold. One, it's just putting into play everything we're already doing. So Parks and Rec, Fire Department, and various other departments are already using what's like the store-type of cards, Lowe's cards, State, this is covering those type of cards as well, not just your pure Visa, MasterCard. So this is codifying all that. We're, we're pretty much putting into the policy what we're already doing. We've kind of reviewed what we are doing, make sure it makes sense. We talked to department heads, and we put all that in there. We're also including in this policy an option, if we want to in the future, to allow a general-purpose credit card, which we don't have right now. And that, that card would be kept in the Finance Office exclusively, and we're gonna develop, if we do this, develop some kind of sign-out procedure, some kind of documentation that explains these expenditure, make sure there's a purchase order assigned to it, that kind of stuff. And it would stay in the possession of the Finance Department, locked up.
Okay, so going back to my original question, are the cards we're using now, or the cards that we propose to use, are they paid off monthly, so there's no interest accrued?
Oh.
And is there any type of a reward system, either by discounts or cash back on them?
Right now, we don't have any general-purpose cards that have a reward system right now. We just have like Lowe's, Staples, Giant Eagle. There are some rewards with Giant Eagle, like those have rewards, I'm not sure how...
Well, Lowe's does too.
Okay, then maybe we do, I'm not, I'm not real sure on that, but I don't, I'm not sure. You don't know? But, yeah, we would have that. We have not set up any kind of actual general-purpose credit card. That is one thing, when we're shopping around for them, we'll look at, you know, what kind of interest they charge. Although, like, I agree with you, I, we're not gonna let, we're not gonna finance something and let it sit around. It's gonna get paid the next month, so there shouldn't be an interest issue, as long as they're paid on time, which is the plan.
And, and if, if we do get any cards that have some type of reward, when, when either the Finance Director or the, the person who's controlling the cards gives their report to council, they will report that, that they are so many sky miles, or cash back, and things like that.
I think we'd look for that.
I would, I would think so too, yeah.
Yeah, all else equal, you wanna look for something with no fees, and then also that would give us some kind of reward.
To our specific purchasing.
It depends on how much we're gonna use this general-purpose card as well. I mean, is it gonna be just a once-in-a-while thing, that it's something that you can only get on Amazon? Or is it, are we gonna start paying more bills on it? That's not really been decided at this point yet, and what kind of limit we're gonna put on this card. So it's just kind of putting it out there as an option.
Anything else, John?
One more. So do you foresee that, once you get accustomed to using this, that maybe some of the open accounts that you have, that you have to do more laborious work paying them all, can all be incorporated, so you have one check out to, by the card for those type of purchases?
Instead of having multiple invoices and checks going?
Yeah, so if you got X plumbing supply, you have an open account there. You could still incorporate that card, and X, Y, and Z suppliers now could all be paid by that same card.
We could do that, yeah. I mean, I guess the options are kind of unlimited. We, the original purpose of it was just to start, to start with it, use a low limit, use it only occasionally for things on like Amazon or other places that you can get much better deals on than you can by paying by checks. That was the original start of it, but it may expand into what you're saying there as well. And then obviously, the rewards would be a nice kickback as well. A lot of options there when we start this.
I found it'd be a simple bookkeeping system, too.
What's that?
It's a simple bookkeeping system also.
Yeah, 'cause it consolidates everything into one statement, sure.
Anybody else from council? Anybody from the audience? Come up to the microphone, state your name, address.
Barb Tittle, 909 Middlebury. To follow up on Ms. Rosenberg's question, will there be any kind of checks on it other than just a once-a-year audit, which checks a sample of bills? And like, maybe a quarterly check? Because it's something that seems like it's very open for abuse. And then, and then you find out, you know, three years from now, someone spent, you know, X number of thousand dollars fraudulently, and it's in the newspaper.
Well, first of all, the department head has to, has to approve the purchase. And then the employee has to bring back some type of receipt that they purchased it. Then there's a form that has to go to the Finance Department. The Finance Department also has to sign off on it, saying this was an appropriate purchase.
So there is.
So there is, there is.
Anybody else from the audience? Back to council?
Move to approve. Do you need the emergency on this? With emergency?
Not necessarily, but it would be nice, yeah.
Yeah, we had three readings, you might need it. With emergency?
Own favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, passes.
Jack, Public Safety.
Health and Safety. We have one item on the agenda, and that's to authorize police towing contract terms, rates, and fees.
Yeah, Chief's been very patient, waiting for this. We started talking about some of her challenges with the current towing contracts that we have, and frankly, kind of over the years, the lack of competitiveness that we're finding in the industry. There's less and less towing companies, and as a result, some of our code requirements to bid, to be eligible to bid on our contract for towing. So when the police, you know, need to have a car towed, for whatever reason, off the public right away, if Melanie's busy trying to get snowplows out there, that's the kind of weak contract that we use. Well, what she's finding is, one, she observed that our rates are, are kind of below market rate, and two, there are some things that she would like to propose, that she is proposing, that would allow maybe other bidders to bid on it. Some of the requirements, like, have to have a lot in the city. That seems to be, become now more restrictive than it is valuable to us. So anyways, I'll let the Chief talk through some of these points, but we're seeking your support for these changes.
Yeah, it is, the, the issues are trifold. So the first one would be to raise some of the rates, and we're only proposing two changes to the ordinance currently. And as Mr. Rutter stated, Ms. Jones noticed that we are below some of the standard fees for the surrounding jurisdictions. So we're only proposing a $10 increase from $90 to $100 on basic standard towing, and then a $3 increase from $12 to $15 for storage fees. Everything else seemed to be in line with other jurisdictions. The second issue with the, the ordinance, 13711, basically deals with, Mr. Rutter stated, is we only currently have three different tow companies in the city that operate a tow yard within the city, and that's required per the ordinance. We used to have six or seven, and it was, it was competitive. I'm not exactly sure why. Maybe it's too expensive, maybe, for whatever reason, we only have three different tow companies now that operate lots in the city. What we're finding is, you know, we have multiple times during the day, multiple times during the week, that we have requests for tow's, and oftentimes, those tow companies aren't available, or they're, they already have a driver out, and they just, or they don't answer the phone. So we've had to go outside of the tow companies listed and go to outside agencies, whether it's in Streetsboro, or Ravenna, or Brimfield, and we're not abiding by our own, our own ordinance. So we're proposing that the language in the ordinance gets stricken that deals with the occupation of a tow yard in the city. This would allow us to go outside, as we have been. And I know that there are a couple representatives from the tow companies here, maybe they have something to add to that. The third issue deals with, also a revision to Kent City Ordinance 35602, and that's impounding of vehicles on public property. What we're finding at the Police Department, because what we found is there's limited parking. What we're finding in the Fire Department, and as well as what we're anticipating to find in the new city hall lot would be a limited amount of parking for employees. And so the change that we're proposing would be to allow towing to happen before any tow, any ticketing happens on city property. So what we've noticed on the Police Department lot is vehicles that have been ticketed numerous times, and then they either are not paying their tickets, or we're not having the opportunity to either catch them. We want the ability to, to see and notice on first violation, be able to tow those vehicles from our property. And with student property surrounding us, we're noticing that most of these violators are students parking. So we're, we're gonna get a new group of violators probably every, every semester, every year. So those are the three issues that we're dealing with.
Questions, Roger?
Chief, I'm just curious, how many vehicles do you think per year we tow? Estimate?
1,200 to 1,500.
1,200 to 1,500? And it, it sounds like that it makes sense what you're, you're suggesting, when we have new signage then, for instance, at the, so that people know that
Yes.
they're gonna be open to towing immediately.
That's correct.
Rather than ticketing. And that signage then would be something that, once the ordinance passed, that we'd have to get up right away before we...
Yeah, we currently have parking signage at both entrances to our lot, and so this would be in addition to, I suppose?
Yeah.
Like violators will be towed, or something to that effect? Sure.
Further, Roger?
No.
Tracy?
I'm assuming probably that the requirement that we used lots in Kent was to use businesses that were located in Kent. And all these businesses, I think, are located in Kent, except Baker's Towing now is not in Kent, they're in Antigua Falls, I believe. So could we do the same thing, like, say, we would try these companies first, and if they're not available, then we can go to an outside company? So again, to give the advantage to a Kent company?
We could do that, sure. Yeah, what we're finding, there has been a couple of companies. It's not necessarily a company that is operating out of the city, but they have to have a tow yard in the city.
I understand.
Yeah, so we've had...
But I'm sure that the companies originally that operated in the city had tow yards in...
Sure.
Because all of these were originally Kent businesses.
Yeah, I mean, we can do that. If we, you know, go to the, the three currently tow companies that operate out of the city, we go to them first, and then go on from there, certainly.
I think that'd be great.
Sure.
Heidi?
Yeah, I mean, we pay the towing company, and then when somebody goes to get their car out, they pay the towing company, right? We don't necessarily, no. We, if it's a, if it's a Police Department tow, or a city, city tow, we would go to these companies first. And we don't pay them anything. We don't pay them anything, but this is what they're allowed to charge services? That is correct, there is a maximum on the amount you can charge. Now, those, those don't exist on, on a private tow. So if somebody breaks down, they call a tow yard, and they can charge what state, what's the state maximums or the state minimums charge.
Thank you.
John?
Who are the tow, three tow companies now?
Plaza, Baker's, and City Service Towing.
Plaza, what's the second one?
Plaza and Baker's, and City Service.
So you haven't incorporated that Marlboro Towing that's brought everybody out yet?
No, they're in Brimfield.
Okay. Now, you said that tow without ticket, so if I understand this correctly, so if I park in the city yard parking lot down on Columbus Street, and I over, I go out and get drunk, forget to get my car, thank God, so in the morning, somebody towed me away?
For that lot, I believe there is allowable 24-hour parking.
Okay, so let's, let's say I'm in a, I'm in a 10-hour parking spot drunk.
Generally, they would have to be a ticket first.
It'd have to be a ticket first?
Yes.
Okay.
And then they, they would either, you would either fail to pay, or commit another violation the next day or the next night, and so a second violation would then, would then prompt the tow, the allowable tow.
Now, the third question is, I, I only ever, once in my life had a vehicle on a wrecker, and it was about two weeks ago. And I'd called, I think, at least two of these towing companies. They said they don't do private tow's anymore, they only do municipal tow's.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
And so I had to pay somebody 68 bucks to come out of Akron and tow me to Ravenna.
Yeah, I mean, I, we don't, we don't necessarily deal with them as a private tow company, but only with municipal tow companies.
So I guess my question is, if a guy can come from Akron for 68 dollars and tow me to Ravenna, and the other guy I called couldn't tow me for four hours, was gonna charge 85 dollars, and he was in Ravenna, why is $100 a reasonable fee?
I, I would be very surprised, I mean, I, I trust that you had paid 68 dollars, but we checked with Ravenna, Streetsboro, Brimfield, those surrounding agencies. We did not, I don't think you reached out to Akron. I did not. But they were generally between 90 and 125 dollars or so.
That's the standard tow, yeah, I don't know, I've never used one before, but...
I believe the state minimum right now is 95 dollars. So if they're, they charged you 65, you got a pretty good deal.
68.
68, you get a pretty good deal. Yeah.
Tracy?
So I'm assuming then, if somebody does not come to pick up their car, then the towing company is responsible for it, left in their yard?
Yes, and, and there's storage fees that are incurred, starting at every 12 hours, and then every 24.
Right, but I mean, if they just abandoned the car?
Yes, it is up to the...
It's not our responsibility at all.
That is correct. And the, and the salvage companies, they will, I believe it's after 30 days, they, they can file to have a salvage title generated, and we help them with that. And so I know Tom from Plaza does it a lot, I think Baker's also. But they can, after 30 days, it's considered abandoned under, under state law, and then we can help issue them a salvage title, that they can then take to the B&amp;V and get that vehicle transferred into their name, to recoup some of their losses.
Heidi?
Yeah. How, how does somebody know that their car's been towed, and where? And what kind of signage is on city lots that might explain the process? Well, we, because we, because of this ordinance, we keep a rotational list. So the three companies that we currently have right now are on a list with our dispatch. And so when, when we need a tow, we go to the next available person on that list. And they report back that it's going to be a 2015 Ford Focus, the title, you know, the license plate, and, and that information. So when somebody comes to look for their cars, notices it, we'll have that information available at our dispatch, and, and where it can be found, located.
John?
Is, is it true that on a private property tow, that the property has to be posted and have the name of the towing company, and a way to reach the towing company? Or else you can't tow it, or you have to give 24-hour notice or something?
Yeah, and you're specifically talking about businesses and apartment complexes. So residences are not included in that.
Oh, they are?
No. So we deal mostly with apartment complexes and businesses, like strip malls and things like that. And they do have to have, if they contract with a towing company, they have to have those signs posted. If they have not contracted with a tow company, I don't think a tow company will come to their property and tow from there. They're just not gonna touch, that's too much liability on the tow company, that if it's not signed properly.
Okay, further? Anyone from the audience wish to speak on this? Come up, and your name and address, please.
David Moore, 215 Bowman Drive, Kent. I'm here on behalf of Plaza. Couple things we don't agree with. Number one, the rate. If I tow a truck today, guess how much?
A quarter?
$100,000 for a flatbed. Figure a driver, fuel, wear and tear. We're proposing 135 for towing, and $20 a day for storage. Last month, we towed 15 cars for the city of Kent, and we still have five of them. We might get $200 when we're done. And we gotta store them on our lot for 30 days, wait for the Police Department to generate a title, roughly another 30 days. So we got a car sitting there for 60 days. Isn't doing us any good. We're losing money. The other thing I would like to see changed is our response time. Believe it's 15 minutes now during the day? Like to see that to go to 20. You try to get through the city of Kent, with all the new buildings and students, in 15 minutes. Nights we'd like to see to go to a half hour. We gotta get up, get dressed, fire up a truck. If it's winter, we don't know what conditions we're driving into. Private property tow, we're not involved in. I don't really have any concerns with the other part of the towing she was talking about, as far as the private, the lots. But those are the things we'd like to see addressed.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the audience wish to speak on this issue? Come back up, that's fine.
I agree with having a secondary list for a towing company, but my concern with that is, say, somebody from Ravenna comes in. We charge $4 a mile, in the city limits. So if this guy's doing 12 miles round trip, he just made an extra 50 bucks to come into the city of Kent and tow a car out, when we're the ones paying taxes and stuff on properties, and they're not paying anything. They're, they're laughing all the way to the bank. Yeah, well, come in, hey, no problem.
Okay, Heidi?
Yeah, I have a question. So the, the standard tow, $100, there's all these other prices. Don't you typically do add-ons to that? Like if you use a flatbed truck?
Like winching, we don't really get a lot for doing that. I was just out on one on 261 last week, but we probably ran 50 foot of cable to get a car out of the medium. We made 100 bucks, and there was two of us out there.
But if you had a flatbed truck using that, you could add 30 dollars to the rate, so that would give you close to your 135.
Well, if you take a flatbed, most people don't winch with flatbed wreckers. They don't hold the ground as well as a regular tow truck. And that's one of the problems that we need to talk to the cap, the chief about, is when their dispatchers call us, everybody thinks the flatbed wrecker is the cure-all, and it's not. You get a car on there that's wrecked, you might get it on, but when you get it back to a yard, you gotta hook another truck to it to get it off, 'cause it doesn't roll. All of our trucks are sling trucks, along with wheel lifts, where we can put a sling underneath them, lift them up, good... All of our trucks are sling trucks, along with wheel lifts, where we can put a sling underneath them, lift them up, get down the road. If it's got two good tires on it, I can tow it, we don't need a flatbed, but they automatically call for a flatbed. So it all depends on the situation you're in, on what you make, and even with the flatbed, the rates should go up. All the way across the board, all of it should go up. You, you figure an average tow company, split our costs in half, we're at 2,000 dollars a month, just to operate for the city. Average cost is anywhere from 4,000 to 5,000 dollars a month to run a truck. And that's one of the reasons why you don't see tow companies in here anymore. Very expensive to run, a lot, a lot of money in it, then you got taxes on tow yards. I don't think that ordinance should be changed. Baker runs a yard here, he follows that ordinance, he stays in the city limits. Rivers, when they were here, they rented a yard. Gateway Towing out of Streetsboro, they rented a yard, they left because they couldn't make any money. It's a lot of expense to run a tow company. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else from the audience? Back to council, what, I'm sorry.
She was going to.
Barb? No, okay. Tracy?
Yeah, is there any problem with raising the rates to the request and the time to their requests?
The response, the response time that he spoke of is not in the ordinance. That is a policy, an internal policy from the police department, above and beyond what the ordinance states. So basically, we have response times during the day and during the evening, like he said, and, because what we were coming across is, we were calling these tow companies and waiting 45 minutes to an hour, and it was just unacceptable, when we had, we could have called somebody else and been quicker response. Because you have to consider officers are sitting out there behind vehicles and things when there's an arrest or we're jamming up traffic. You can imagine if at the intersection of Haymaker and Water Street, we're waiting a half an hour, 45 minutes, that's disrupting a lot of traffic, so we try to get them out, we try to make the, the response time reasonable for the day, the time of day. We don't, I don't have a problem with raising that, I understand the city is busier now, and we can do that internally through the policy, so that's not a problem.
But as far as the rates goes, is there any problem with raising it up to 135 dollars?
I don't care one way or the other, how much they charge, I think, as long as we stay within the, the state amounts, but I think that we will be higher than, than everybody else in the area, I mean, Ms. Jones did that survey, and 100 was, was median, so.
Well, can we split the difference then? Sure. Okay, for the increase for the toes, and then the increase for the 24-hour storage?
Do you, you want to raise it to like 115 or 1?
Uh, 1, 1, yeah, 120, 125.
I get a question.
Okay.
And then raise the, raise the 24-hour storage maybe to 20?
From 12 to 20?
Right. And then what'd you say, Roger, to 125?
Okay. Heidi, I'll get to you.
Well, with all due respect, the flatbed truck was the one that was mentioned as the big expense, and the difficulty for the tow company and really understanding what kind of vehicle was needed, so it sounds like there's a communication issue that could be clarified with the dispatchers or the people that call for the towing company?
Yeah, and that's, that's been around for years and years. You know, it's hard for officers to find, to figure out what damages caused underneath the vehicle, depends on whether the vehicle's front-wheel drive or rear-wheel drive, the capabilities, and sometimes the experience of a tow truck, tow truck operator, and it's, it's hard for us to tell, I mean, we're not, you know, we're not mechanics, so if we think that a truck or a vehicle needs a, a wheel lift, and it turns out that, that both axles are busted, then they have to turn around, drop, go back and get a flatbed. So we try our best, but we're, we're not, we're not experts, and that problem's been around for, for a long time.
Roger?
Chief, do you think by increasing the rates that we're going to increase competition, therefore we might have better response times and be able to get the trucks out there?
That's a good question, I don't know, I mean, he, he's correct, it's, it's an expensive business, and there's a long process to recoup their, their losses, as he said, you know, salvage titles. Some departments don't do salvage titles, we started doing it, we did it years ago, back in the 70s and 80s, we stopped doing it for about a couple decades, we started back doing it. The state of Ohio does not require us to do it, I don't believe so, but we, anyway, we, we did it to help our local tow yards. A lot of agencies don't do it, because it's kind of a, it's a pain in the butt, to go through the BMV, to file the correct paperwork. Do I think it would generate, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know, really don't.
When was the last time we increased the daily, the daily rate? Do you remember when that was? The only reason I ask is that this, this appears to be, to me, the daily storage rate appears to be something that we would have found back in the 80s, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I think 10, 15 dollars a day was...
I know that the ordinance was revised in 14, I don't believe that that revision reflected in the storage fees, though. So it probably has been quite, quite some time, maybe, maybe you guys can, the storage fees. So it was raised then?
But it did increase in 14.
When?
With the, the research that you did on other neighborhood, like neighboring cities, if we increased the rate to what was suggested by other council members, would be, would we be the most expensive city in our area to have your car towed from?
Do you remember who the highest was, Hope?
I do not, I don't.
I'm just concerned that with, with going above and beyond your recommendation.
Sure.
That people coming here would be, it would be more expensive, especially if there's, if there's a 4 dollar per mile, boy, that could add up really fast, we could be having, you know, people could park in the wrong lot, and, and we could quickly become the most expensive city in the area to have your car towed in, just...
Yeah, I, Hope did that research, I'm not exactly sure who the highest was.
I, I don't think that the 125 and the 20 is going to put us out of, like...
We're still within the range of, like, an average?
John?
Suppose a person is driving and gets in an automobile accident up on Main Street or somewhere, and they have a AAA tow, and they're not our contract, the AAA. Can they use their own tow, or they have to have somebody else?
It depends on the seriousness or the criticalness of the, of the tow, so if we are in the middle of Haymaker and Water, and AAA oftentimes is not local, so AAA may be out of Akron or Youngstown, maybe the closest ones, say, no, you're not going to use AAA, I'm sorry, but you're, unfortunately, you're going to use our, whoever's on our rotation. So it depends on the location of the tow, the timeliness of them getting here. AAA used to be with City Service, I'm not sure AAA is with City Service anymore, I don't believe...
You say any motoring club, it doesn't necessarily have to be AAA, but any motoring club.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
And so what if it's a snowy Wednesday night in Kent, Ohio, and people are bumping into people all over town, and we do have a serious one on Main Street that's blocking traffic, but our three local boys are busy? What do you do?
Well, then we would go outside, as we're suggesting, we would go to probably Marlboro, which is, I think, is the most, the closest to the city, not within the city limits, because they're just inside Brimfield. And I think there is two others that we have, we would like to extend our contracts to, one in Ravenna, and I believe one in Streetsboro.
Okay, and one last question. When you have a car towed to the salvage lot and the city provides a salvage title for that vehicle, what happens to the liens holders of mortgage li, or car loan liens on those? Who takes president on that?
That's a good question for the tow companies, I believe that the tow companies have to then take, take care of the lien.
Now, what happens is once you guys send out the title notification, that goes to the registered owner. So if it's Huntington, or one of them, ABC Auto Rental, or a firm, they get notified that we have their car, and that there'll be a fee to come to get it, and they have the opportunity to come get it. If they don't, once we get a salvage title, it's more or less scrapped. The process to get a car to resell, we have to go through the highway patrol, we have to take it almost 75 miles one way to get it inspected, and it's really just not worth it, because most of them aren't worth their time and the money to tow them all the way to the dump. So the lien holders aren't notified.
So they either pay up, negotiate, or the car goes to the scrapyard?
Here, Fiona? We keep talking about going out of the city, when you talk about calling the three own, three tow companies, that's within the nine and a half miles of the city of Kent?
Yes.
So what happens if we expand that to the zip code and include the one in Brimfield?
Well, that's what I'm proposing, is, is the ability to do that.
Is that, okay, all right.
It would just, the, the ordinance would just strike the language now that states, and you should have it, uh, there you go. Under 13711 Motor Vehicle Towing, it's B, and B would be stricken, and the, the language states, each commercial tow service shall maintain an adequate and secure impound area located within the corporate limits.
I heard that, and I wasn't sure, okay, so that's a good thing, we're picking up another...
You know, if we don't, I mean, we're, I don't want to say stuck, but we're limited to the three tow companies that operate here in Kent, and who knows, I mean, they could fall out, they could, they could end their business and be, we're down to two, then we're down to one, I mean, we have to, I think we need to give ourselves a little more options than just, just the three.
Tracy?
I understand that.
Tracy?
But we're also going to put language in there that says we're going to do the in-town companies first, and then go out.
I can either put it in the ordinance, or we can include it in our internal policy, which we would have to follow. I mean, I'd be glad to do either.
The ordinance?
Roger?
Yeah, Chief, I want to make sure I get this right. So if we, the tow company will get ahold of us after 30 days, let's say, and the police release the vehicle to allow it to be titled through the registrar, is that what happens?
We don't necessarily release the vehicle, so...
But you can't title it, the police, the police department doesn't have the power to title a car, correct?
No, but we have, we, we have the, we file a necessary paperwork for the BMV.
Okay.
To, to do that.
Okay, so you actually file that paperwork?
Yes.
And that allows them...
We actually fill out the paperwork, we provide it to the tow companies, and they take it to the BMV.
Okay, and then they, the registrar will title them to that tow?
That's correct.
If they want the car.
That's correct.
Are you able to title it to the, to the tow company?
What happens is they give us a salvage title, and they give them a note of, whoever the registered owner is, the lien holder or person, they're notified, they throw a registered letter, that if you don't come to get your vehicle, it's going to be a fresh, a part of the car. Because we, we just can't, we can't afford to have people sitting there. We have, I know of four vehicles that I brought in personally, that we thought for sure would be going, like a Lincoln, and a couple SUVs, and we found that the owners don't want to back there, so...
The lien holders write it off as a loss, especially if it's a vehicle, a 15,000 dollar vehicle that's now been, you know, totaled.
Chief, can I ask another question then? So once you issue the salvage title or whatever it is, all right, that, in essence, the ownership of that vehicle goes to the tow company?
Well, the, the original owner, whether it's a lien holder or an owner, has to give up, give up their rights to that vehicle.
Correct.
Yes.
And then, but then who owns the vehicle at that point?
They would have to, they have to take it to the BMV and put it in their name.
Okay, and then they could sell that vehicle?
Sell it, crush it, sure.
Okay, that's all, I was...
Okay, further, John?
Now, when we're talking about impounded vehicles in the tow lot, are we talking about all vehicles that get towed to the impound lot, or just ones that are illegally parked? Otherwise, if a crash vehicle is towed in, is that also the same scenario with the salvage title and that, if they don't pick it up, or is that something different?
Yeah, it's the same thing, so most, I believe, I'm trying to remember, if we've ever come across a salvage title for a tow company that was towed from private property, that's probably happened, but generally, what we deal with are vehicles that the police department has, has towed for the city and been not collected or not, that the fines have not been paid, and we've, we've processed more of those titles than anything.
So it's, it's both illegal parking and crash?
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry, yeah. There are obviously some times where students or folks just can't afford either the tickets or to get the vehicle out of tow, for whatever reason, or oftentimes they're in the hospital, or oftentimes they're in jail, and they just don't have the money, and those, those fees, storage fees keep incurring and incurring, and it's got to the point where sometimes the, the fines are more than, more than what the car is worth.
Heidi?
I'm sorry, so what do we do within that situation? What, what recourse does a person who is in poverty have?
We have sometimes forgiven fees, or forgiven a tow, or worked with the tow companies to see what they would like to do. They can probably relate more that, more of those sort of circumstances than, than I can, but we have settled, try to look for an in-between. We have at, at times where, instead of a private tow company being stored on their lot, we've had those vehicles towed to the city lot, and it's the same thing, the fees are incurring, so we will, we will settle with an owner, and just either forgive the fees or cut them in half, and try, you know, so they could recoup their vehicle.
Thank you.
I don't know about the, I don't know what the tow companies do.
Can I go back to the audience again?
Really, a motion hasn't been made, so I guess...
Okay, go ahead, Barb.
I can certainly understand the tow companies needing to recoup their business costs, and I can understand the idea of the fines and the, the towing costs, rather, and the storage costs being raised as a punitive measure for people who park illegally, but like John was talking about, you know, if your car is towed after an accident because they won't wait for the AAA to come, and that happened to me once in Beechwood, I called AAA, and the police said, oh, no, we'll call our guy, and it took an hour anyway, because it was in a busy area of Beechwood. But fortunately, the guy was AAA, and I was able to recoup, I didn't have to pay for the tow. But say I'm, you know, in, at Water Street and Haymaker, and some guy with no insurance, so I'm not going to be able to recoup any costs from him, and there are a lot of those people out there, hits me, and I'm in an accident, and I get towed by the police, and I have to pay these punitive fees when I wasn't doing anything wrong. I think that that's something to consider as well, thank you.
Thank you. Roger?
Hope, i- if, in that scenario, or any scenario, if an accident were to occur, and, and I'm not at fault, wouldn't the insurance company be covering those toes?
Yes, yes.
Well, my, my thinking is, is that, I've had that situation happen to me, and I guess I was fortunate, my insurance covered that, so...
Okay, I think we've, go ahead, John, this has gone too long.
I know it's gone way too long. If, in an accident tow, doesn't the owner of the vehicle that's damaged have the option where he wants it towed? They get towed to their home or a garage, they don't have to go to back to the tow company, do they?
No, they don't have to, they can, we would provide the tow, we would call the tow for them, but where it's towed to is really up, is, is a private agreement between that driver and the tow company at that point.
Right, so normally the tow that goes to the impound lot is some type of a violation tow? tow?
Generally, yes.
Generally.
Yes.
Okay, let's have a motion here. Tracy.
I'll make a motion to move to get rid of the ordinance as is right now, but adding into the ordinance that we, we try to get the in-town lot businesses first, before we go outside. Does that make sense?
What's the tier rate?
Plus, the rate increase from, the tow rate from ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty-five, and then the, the twenty-four-hour storage from twelve to twenty dollars a day.
Second.
Do we need emergency on that, hope?
If a business lies outside of the city, but the tow yard is inside the city, that still counts?
Yeah, those three, yes.
So that business would then still be counted as an in, in-town service?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need emergency on this hope, or no?
It would be not.
Okay. Do you want emerg, with emergency, second with emergency?
There's a third item that she had asked for, do you want to make that party a motion too? It was the signage, for city...
For first offense towing on city property?
Oh, yeah, sure. That too.
Is that okay with you, Garrett?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Did we have any discussion here? John? I probably will not vote on the motion, not because I'm against it, because I'd like to see it as be redrafted, so I can look at everything all put together again. Okay. Heidi?
I'm gonna vote for the motion, kind of reluctantly. I understand that people have to have fair business prices, and we want ours, ours, especially our city businesses to be competitive on that scale, but I am really concerned about there being proper signage, and that's what I would ask for, the city to ensure that if somebody's gonna be towed from a city property, that we ensure that we have, we have good signage, and people know that, what the consequences can be, if that can... I don't know, do we have to have this in the, in this, or this could be just part of the policy? I'm asking for that to be part of the policy. Because I don't want to define every little piece of this, the signage, I want...
Yeah, this is, this issue deals with a different part of that ordinance, is 35602, so it's really not a policy violate.
I would, as, as the lawyer for the city, if this passes, I would ask the city to make signs that are compliant with what private property, or private businesses would be required to put there, so that if, if it's after hours, a, a student would know who to call, where to go. So in, in that, in that regard, we may have to decide to choose one towing company to do our towing off of city parking lots, so that we can comply with the revised code section that allows, that specifically states where the vehicle is, and where the person can get it if they want to redeem it. I, I don't think that that's too much to ask at all.
I agree. Do you need it in the ordinance?
Not necessarily, no, no. If, 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 if that is your direction, I can work with Melanie's department to make sure that our signs are compliant with the revised code. Okay.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Okay. That's all for health and safety.
Community Development, John Gohar.
Okay, zoning code updates, Bridget.
You want me to introduce you, Bridget?
Pardon? No, I understand. Let, let them know that the legal part of this will take place next week in our regular council meeting, this is just a discussion for all that. It's, it's hard to understand, in fact, I don't have the time. No, thank you for coming.
Good luck, guys, and gals.
At least we talked about something, maybe they can be made to tow trucks.
During that, experience.
Wonder if boys can be in the Girl Scouts.
Hey, Bridget, Bridget.
I think they just call themselves scouts now.
Why didn't you have a charge?
But it wasn't your call, right?
Yeah, soccer ball.
No, you shouldn't have, you should have been able to, you should have...
Control.
Yeah, I wish I'd have known, I would have gotten you in a tary. That's not, the only reason I know that is because...
Go ahead, Brid.
I'm sorry.
Hi, this is a no-action item, but Dave had asked me to come in and give you an update on the zoning code. As a reminder, we actually entered into a contract with a consultant to do the FAVES one zoning code update. We entered in that contract in April. The first order of business for them after we had our introductory meeting was to do a diagnostic. They basically took several months and went through our zoning code to identify those areas that they felt need to be addressed, many of them aligned with the request for qualifications that you all had received regarding redundancy in language, conflicts of code, and basically just getting rid, getting rid of antiquated language. I won't go through the specifics of the diagnostic, but there were numerous themes in it, and I'll kind of go through those five, and those areas are going to be reflected in the zoning code update as we, we go forward. The first thing is, we have always had issues, as every zoning code has, with conflicts between cross-references in sections of the code, especially when you're dealing with conditionally permitted uses. Basically, every zoning district has permitted uses and conditionally permitted uses, and those conditionally permitted are linked back to a separate section that identifies which conditions are most applicable in that zoning district to that particular use. We have made numerous updates to the code, an extensive one in June of 2011, and then, as you know, subsequent ones to that, and we have found that conflicts exist. We do have legal language that says where a conflict is identified, the more restrictive requirement basically takes precedence, but our goal is to minimize the number of those conflicts. So one of the most important and most exciting things that staff's looking forward to having is we are going to actually have our code electronic, has a Word document, but it's gonna have hyperlinks in it for cross-referencing. So for example, as you're going through, if it lists a condition, that will be highlighted as a link, you'll click on it, it'll automatically take you to that section of the code. Also, by having these hyperlinks, it will auto, very quickly identify for staff anywhere where there may be a conflict. We do get, as part of this zoning code update, the ability to go in and, and add those hyperlinks on our own, it is not something that we have to pay for after the fact. So as we go forward with additional amendments, because usually, as development moves forward and times change, you will be making adjustments to your zoning code, they are never static, they're always a changing document, we'll be able to keep those hyperlinks going and those cross-references, and minimize that duplication and conflicts that we're experiencing now. Another tool that will be added is extensive graphics and tables. For those of us that do zoning, I always say it's logical, but it's completely illogical for those that don't do zoning. So one of the things that we often have done, just anecdotally on our own, to help explain, is do drawings. Side lot, front lot, frontage versus other aspects of a, of a site can be very confusing for people that, especially for homeowners or first-time new construction projects where they're unfamiliar with these terms. So we often draw it, if you have a corner lot, for example, you actually have two front yards. So we are going to be incorporating graphics to help explain a lot of that. They gave us a sampling of just a few of them in the definition section, and we were really excited. Seeing the ones for signs, different types of roof, as you know, we often measure height from the average height of the, of the highest point on a roof. Well, there's various types of rooftops, so we've often run into conflicts as to what point are we actually measuring that off of. So these graphics will help not only those that are applying the code to their projects, but it'll help staff definitively define for them how we're looking at that. A third item is reorganizing the chapters. Our chapters are very logical, but we have many. So what we want to do is pull some of those administrative-related ones into a single chapter. So for example, when we're looking at sound restrictions, time restrictions, and some of those other variables that affect different sites, we actually have them in individual chapters, we'll be putting them all together in what's more of a logical format. So when you look at the table of contents, it'll be shorter, but it'll make sense as to what is encompassed in that chapter. Another item that came up, which I know I have been mentioned several times, but I'm going to reiterate today, the zoning districts actually were found to be based on historic land use development, and really don't need adjusted. Our geographic zoning districts make sense. When you're dealing with, often you hear people talk about using form-based zoning code, hybrids of a zone, of a, of a form-based, you're often talking about a community that is not fully developed. They have what we call green space. They have the ability yet to define whether they're gonna put an industrial park there, if they're gonna make it commercial only. We have very limited land that has not been developed. Our zoning code was actually put in place in 1971. Much of what you see out there existed prior to that. So while, yes, there may have been just one store or a, a lot, it was usually next to a commercial use already established along a primary corridor. Those districts that you see that, for example, are RC, which is a residential-commercial or inverse, commercial-residential, those were established because there was a district that had a mix of both uses, but had a majority of commercial in with residential, or in the RC, they had majority of residential and less commercial, but still there. That example actually came up at the Dunkin' Donuts. We just had a variance request that was denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals for a proposed Dunkin' Donuts at the corner of 43 and 261. The developer, or I should say, the real estate company that owned that lot, was not able, after the meeting, to understand the difference of why was the Dunkin' Donuts on Main Street no issues, and then this one was. What Eric, the Assistant Law Director, and I tried to explain is, the one on East Main Street is in a commercial district. In a commercial district, your commercial uses are permitted uses, there are no conditions. This is a commercial district, a commercial use would make sense there. An other site, the proposed site that they were looking at was an RC, a residential-high-density commercial. That means there's a mix of commercial and residential, but more residential. So the, the commercial use in that particular zoning district becomes conditional. In other words, conditions are added because there's already such a large residential footprint. There was residential around that whole site, directly behind it, directly next to it, and every site except for 261. So it was a different feel than the other districts. So what we want to do is organize those districts and the explanation for those districts in a clearer format, so that the geographic footprint is, will not change, but how it's clarified and described within the context of those districts will make a little more sense. There is one caveat to that geographic change, we do have on our maps, or I mean, I'm sorry, in our zoning code, we have a light industrial zoning district. We don't have one on our geographic zoning map. So we have basically requirements and criteria for an L.I. zoning district that doesn't even exist. So we are going to recommend to Planning Commission in our work sessions when we get to that area that we might want to take that off. We also want to point out that there, we do have one other zoning district, the Central City Redevelopment Overlay District, which was used for the province. We are not suggesting that it will be removed, but we do want that to be looked at extensively. The requirements for that are very specific, and it actually was almost designed and oriented specifically for a type of project like the province. So discussions need to occur as to whether we want to have that overlay district. Now remember, an overlay district is not specific to these geographic footprint, it does say where it can occur, but it has many, many conditions. So we want to look at that, because at the, in the format it's in right now, it doesn't seem like it is actually usable, so we have to ask, is it something we want to use? Maybe we need to make it more accessible, or perhaps it's something at this point we want to eliminate and introduce another type of mechanism for that. I can take questions, but one of the things I want to highlight is, we just got our definition chapter. Believe it or not, we spent literally three hours going through the definitions and didn't even actually get all the way to Z. Definitions are the key to a zoning code. How a word is defined and how it is applied matters. We have been in many court cases, as you know, over the last few years, and how those words apply really do carry a lot of weight. I, I am happy to say that many of the amendments that staff have brought forth to you over the last few years, the consultants have found to be very strong, they like them. The table of consanguinity, which Eric Fink came up with for definition of family in order to eliminate the cousin, was, they had not seen before, and they were extremely impressed with its use. And I will say, two years in, it is working wonderfully for us. So not all our definitions change, but we do need to bring them up to date. We have words in there that aren't even applicable anymore, so that is key. We need to get the definitions done, and then move forward to the next reviews.
Tracy?
Now, have you started doing the definitions in front of the Planning Commission already?
No.
Okay, so now, when is, when is that gonna start?
If you reference my memo, I had basically, the first proposed work session, tentatively is scheduled for February 19th. The way we're doing it is basically, the consultants now, like, for example, they're gonna be getting us back the definition chapter, hopefully next week. We will then have two weeks to look at it before the consultant comes back to us, we'll go through it, hammer it out again, they'll give us a draft. Once the draft is in a workable format, we're just gonna schedule a work session. It will be advertised, like every public meeting, but we are not anticipating having Planning Commission vote on it. It's, it's gonna be a talk-through, come back with drafts. For an example, medical marijuana, four months, four months' worth of meetings, just to get that use reintroduced. This is a slow and steady process, if it's going to be done right and well. The work session notifications will come out to council, to be advertised in the paper, on our website, and everyone's invited to attend, but it'll be specific as to what we're talking about at that work session. So not all of them may be something that people are interested in talking to. The Planning Commission will be involved in all of them. Our hope and goal is, because our number of development cases has actually dropped, for the first time, we are not seeing Planning Commission meetings every first and third Tuesday. So we are hopeful that we can coordinate where we have all of the cases that might come in within a month, or four, scheduling in a month, at the first meeting, leaving the second meeting open for our work sessions. Now, that may not happen because of cases, so we might have to shift it two weeks earlier or later, depending on the work session, but you will be informed at least two weeks ahead of time of every work session, it'll probably be closer to a month. We don't want to take anything to Planning Commission, though, until we actually have it in a workable, discussable format. So our first one will be definitions, and also Chapter One, which is only one page. So we thought, we thought we could do those two together. It basically just lays out some of the basic specifics, and those drafts will be made available ahead of time, so people can review them before the meeting. And then there is a calendar in the, or tentative calendar and list of order in my memo, that is the schedule the consultants have provided for us. We plan on at least definitely staying in that order. The four-to-six-week interval can get delayed if one of those chapters is one that takes a lot of time in our work session, because we might have to have on a given chapter, you know, we're planning one work session, but it turns out it's actually gonna be three or four. So they'll just, that order will be maintained, and we'll just keep going through it till we actually get a full working draft. Once that occurs, the Planning Commission will make a formalized recommendation to council on that, it will be made available for public comment, even though public comment has been occurring throughout the entire, and then it'll come before the full council. And again, that may take more than one or two reviews before it's actually approved.
Other ones, Tracy?
No.
Robyn?
Yeah, I was wondering, Bridget, about the issue that we did have out at 261 and 43, which, by the way, I was surprised, actually, that didn't go through, but I was wondering how, looking at the... But I was wondering how, looking at the possible, being able to possibly look at situations like the one that happened to be out there, and sitting down and allowing for discussion prior to these properties, which you could look at and see that there might be an issue where we have conflicting interests or desires about what that property should be. What would, mechanism could we use to encourage people to come out and look at what properties might be transitioning? Where we are, the possibilities of residential, the RC situation, so on and so forth. Having an opportunity for them in advance of that property being used in a different way that they feel would diminish their quality of life. To sit down, look at those areas, and then encourage public participation, understanding that that property, quite honestly, is zoned and could be used in a way that might conflict with their interest or their quality of life. How do you think we could go about doing something like this so we don't have issues like 261 and 43 that occur, and then people are running up kind of after the fact or just getting notice? And having to then act in a way which I think would not be as beneficial to them or that neighborhood?
What you're requesting is not something that's actually a viable option because every property that's located within a zoning district is basically eligible for a permitted or conditionally permitted use based on what that established zoning district. So, for example, that parcel is in the RC. It allows basically residential uses as permitted uses, which means it could be a single-family, multifamily, up to a certain limit, or duplex. But it also can be commercial permitted uses. So, it could be as any, something as benign as an accountant's office all the way up to a Dunkin' Donuts. So, you can't really pre, before a use is introduced or a potential project is introduced on a property, get feedback on it. And even if you could, it really isn't something that is going to influence how a private owner of a site, particularly a developer of a commercial site, is going to utilize it. Typically, the way it works, you know, property rights are pretty tannamount in this country. They will call. They ask what the zoning is, what are the eligible uses. We, on a regular basis, practically daily, send out zoning code chapters for whatever that parcel or address is. Sometimes, we never hear back. Other times, they'll call back and they said, "Well, it says that you can do this." Like, for example, we had one with a doggy daycare, the ones where they keep the dogs and let them roam free. We actually didn't have that use in that zoning district. We did have, like, groomer, but a groomer is not the same. So, they kept pushing that it was, it's like, well, it's not. It's not allowed in that, but we let them know what zoning districts it was allowed. So, it's kind of a match. And then, once a project is proposed, we go through a public notice period, which allows residents or adjacent property owners the opportunity to voice their opposition or support of a project. But it's nearly impossible ahead of time to actually get that type of feedback because we, some of these parcels can sit undeveloped for years. Others can also convert. We've had issues where, for example, a residential structure that is located in a commercial district, which we actually have a couple of those. They want to sell it and turn it into a commercial use. They have that opportunity. Their neighbors may not like that, but they do have that opportunity. So, it's really hard to basically do what you're asking, I will say. Once a development is proposed for a site and the information's out there through the public notice, through the notifications that go out to the properties adjacent to it, they come into our office. We sit down frequently with members of the public and explain how a project works, how the site plan works, what they're proposing, what looks like it could be a challenge. So, that information is available to them, but you really can't assist them until you actually know what the use is.
Roger?
So, Bridget, in the big scheme of things, what has been the biggest challenge for our consultants with our zoning?
Quite honestly, they said that they have seen many that were, they actually thought it was fairly sound. The issue with ours is the one they see with many of the other communities they've done with, that there's conflicts. And that's because, over time, amendments are made. This is, went out in 1971. So, a lot of the amendments that have occurred in that conflict, the language, are issues we need to clean up. Most of what they are going to assist with are those things that we identified originally as problematic for us. But overall, they find it to be sound. They find that there's legally, it seems to be sound. There is some changes we're going to make to our signing code because of some recent court cases that have occurred in the last few years. But I will say, Eric was already aware of those cases. And so, when we've had projects come up where it is a sign issue, he brings those to the attention of not only the client or the applicant, but of staff and the members of our commissions. So, overall, they, it does need work. It needs to be, more than anything, updated, like having these hyperlinks, having the ability to use diagrams will definitely just make it more user-friendly. So, overall, though, even with the definitions, they did make, you know, changes, introduce some definitions they think we need, modified some of the wording. But many of our definitions, they left the same. In fact, a few of them were like, "Really? Really, you think this one sounds okay? We think it sounds a little wordy." But with some of this, it has to be wordy because you have to be able to very clearly identify what that word means on a site plan.
Anybody else from council? Anybody from the audience? Okay, thank you.
So, those notices for that first meeting hopefully will be coming out in the next few weeks, but February 19th would be the first one. So, I'll let you know as soon as we're sure of that. If not, it would be the first one in March.
Bridget, and who's Bridget? And who's going to handle the dedication of Newcomer Road?
Yep, that's Bridget's item two.
Yes. Okay, so, as Jen's memo says, Lappin Farms was basically broken up into some parcels for residential redevelopment. Those parcels have been selling. One of the parcels that sold was basically combined with one and then subdivided in a different format. They want to dedicate back to the city the portion of the parcel that extends to the center line on Newcomer. This has been done with the other properties, the other two that were sold on that street. So, we are requesting that council authorize the acceptance of that dedication.
Questions? Question from the audience?
Move to authorize.
Second.
With emergency.
Sure. All in favor of motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes?
Thank you.
Revolving loan, let me guess.
Would be me.
You got help, huh?
I was here to give Bridget a break before she does the next two items.
She's wound up.
So, as the memo indicates, Bridget wrote, back in March of this past year, the U.S. E.D.A. issued or amended terms and conditions that regulate the E.D.A. revolving loan funds in all communities throughout the country. This is not just Kent-specific. So, community development staff, primarily Bridget and myself, contributed to amending our RLF plan. You have a copy of it in front of you. Good thing that we have Bridget as an editor because I make a lot of mistakes, but she caught most of them, if not all of them. Some of the highlights of the changes, and most of them were dictated by the E.D.A. Is they asked us to add a conflicts interest section. Basically, we just copied and pasted the language that they gave us into the, into the plan. They also asked us to provide a more defined environmental review process if there's any land involved in a, in a purchase from the RLF. And when we sent in our initial draft, they sent it back and asked us to provide a more defined process for any delinquent accounts. Of course, we're very fortunate in that we rarely have delinquent accounts, but we provided that to them and sent it back in. And now, alls we're doing is waiting on your approval. I think part of the great news of this whole process is the actual core and mission of the RLF plan didn't need to change at all. What was written long ago and has been written throughout the years is remaining intact. And that's, we're here to help startups. And a recent example of that is Sugar Rush, to help existing businesses grow. And a recent example, that's Ben Tree Coffee, to help existing businesses remain competitive with new technology. And ResTech would be a great example of that. And to help attract businesses from elsewhere, and that would be Madcap Brewery coming over from Stone. So, the main core and mission of the plan hasn't changed, and that's, and that's a good thing. We did take this plan. We presented it to the RLF committee, and they voted unanimously to recommend it to you for adoption. And just briefly, I also have a memo in there that talks about the current activity of the RLF. And just the other day, we got the report in for December, and happy to report that all accounts remain current. And just to let you know that we now get, in principle, in interest payments, about $8,600 a month. So, the current balance now has grown to just under $400,000 that's available for new loans. And so, I'm here today to ask you for council to approve the plan with emergency so that we can submit it to the E.D.A.
Okay, questions? Any from the audience?
Can you refresh me on what the RLF committee is?
It's a group of five people that review loan applications. We have three commercial loan officers, one attorney, and one real estate professional.
Do we appoint those?
Well, I'm trying to remember. Some are appointed by council, one is appointed by the mayor, and we appoint to them. The committee appoints to them, I should say.
Okay.
Do we have any motions?
Move to approve with the emergency.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm really impressed with this plan. That's just what I want to say. Great job.
Bridget's editing.
All in favor of motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I opposed?
Thank you for your time.
Easements for 105 East Main, waterline sidewalk?
Yes, this is basically for two easements at 1005. As Jen's memo explained, the first is for water valve access easement. The developer of the site wanted to have separate water meters per tenant, so they did a primary tap off of the city's main and then into the, which breaks out into the floor behind the tenant spaces. This is then easement to allow our workers to get in there and shut off if, as needed or repair if needed. And then, also, a sidewalk easement because at the southeast corner where the sidewalk was continued, there was a portion that would have made basically the running slope a little steep for anybody that was disabled. So, it basically comes a little bit onto their private property. So, this easement would allow us to maintain and repair that portion that falls on the private site.
Questions from council? From the audience? Back to council?
Move to authorize with the emergency. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes? Bike trail application? Wait a minute.
Stormwater easement.
Yep. This one is actually just the opposite. We are actually the grantor of the easement on this. The UUC Church is building a fellowship hall for stormwater management on the site. They need to take a pipe that will extend through the vegetative area that is just south of the parking lot that was built on the west side of Gogler. This is to allow for that connection then to the, to the stormwater basin.
Questions from council? Anybody in the audience interested in this? Back to council?
Move to authorize with the emergency.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of motion?
Aye.
Epstein.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and Epstein.
Heidi, on a station. Now, the bike trail easement.
Good evening. Just for your information, we're working on a project to extend the trail from the Fairchild Bridge to the Main Street Bridge. And we've received a $700,000 grant through AMATS to construct that. As part of that, we need to construct a bike stair near the West River Place or the old Bissler Building to connect down from the Main Street Bridge down to the trail to replace the deteriorated steps there. We need a sliver of land from West River Place, and we're, been working with them over the last month or so, and we're very, very close to coming to terms on the agreement. Hopefully, have that worked out by the end of the week and would ask for passage of the easement at the regular council meeting. The cost will be, has not been finally determined, but it's going to be between $9,000 and $10,000, we estimate, and that would be paid for out-of-park funds. In addition to that, at the next meeting, we're asking for permission to apply for Clean Ohio Trail Funds to incorporate our matching share of the grant. The federal grant is an 80-20 grant, and this OD in our grant, because it's state monies, can be used to match that as our 20% portion of that. So, we'll also be bringing a resolution at the next meeting for permission to apply for that for the February 1st deadline. So, really, nothing factual really to report tonight, but hopefully, by the meeting, we'll have all the details worked out for you.
Do you need a motion?
Thank you. And that concludes the community development.
All right, I'd like to call the Streets Sidewalks and Utilities Committee to order here. First thing up is a bus shelter agreement. I assume Mr. Bowling is going to be coming forward?
Yes, he's coming, and this is something he's been working on. And we've been in conversation with, with Parda on it. Personally, I think it's a great project because it really starts to promote transit a little more aggressively and particularly closer to the neighborhoods. So, I think those are all good things for Kent, and I'm delighted that Jim's able to kind of get it, put it in a package and present it to you.
Thank you. As the memo stated, we're working with Parda to try to install bus stops, bus shelters at some of the more frequently-used stops throughout the neighborhoods, typically near multifamily housing. We've been working on this with them for a little while. And basically, the premise is we would build the concrete pad and any walkway access for the shelter. They would install the shelter, maintain the shelter. We'd work with the property owner adjacent to it to make sure that they want these, which most of these already are. They've already got targeted five locations, four of which are in neighborhoods around the city of Kent. The money set aside for this, the $7,000, was approved in the budget as part of the miscellaneous act of transportation improvements. So, that's all I have on this one.
Any questions from council? I see a hand. Heidi?
Yes. There's one where I know Frank Hairston's really interested in, and that's one at Kentway. And there's another one at the, potentially at the auto parts store across from CVS, where the owner expressed a willingness to me. So, I just want to put those into the mix and see if that, either one of those is in there.
The Kentway one, we received an email from them about a couple of months ago. So, that one would be in the mix.
I see a lot of people standing around the auto parts store, and that would be an easy one to install, I believe. So, I just want to add that to the, to the list for review.
Sure, has been done.
John, did you have a question?
No, sir.
Okay. Anyone else have a question from council? Anyone in the audience have a question? Back to council?
Move to authorize. It's like with the emergency.
Second.
Any comments?
I'm really super excited about this. I think this is really kicking us up another level in our, in our transit plans to make the city pass a environmentally sound and, you know, offering lots of options. And I, it really breaks my heart to see people sitting, standing out in all sorts of weather. So, I'm, I'm really excited about this.
Seeing no more comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Epstein.
One abstention.
Thank you.
The next item is presentation on sidewalk repair pilot program. We have coming up to the E.D.A.
We have coming up to do that.
Jim took the mics.
Oh, Jim. Oh. Man, you moved awful fast, Jim.
I might go out there in the audience.
Drop the mic.
I don't know. Oh, we already have it. We don't have this.
Okay, thank you. I also want to thank the residents of Aaron Drive that are here that sat through the rest of this meeting to get to this point, so I appreciate it. Thank you all. They actually really represent a microcosm of what we're going to talk about today, so I hope afterwards you have a chance to, you take a moment and say what you've gone through and how this applies to that, so. This started, we had a discussion, actually it was a year ago in January, about a sidewalk update, and, thank you very much, Mayor. We heard some very distinct things during that meeting, and I sort of captured those in these first slides. Things that we heard were wanting complaints addressed faster, sort of a desire for an on-call sidewalk replacement, more spot replacements were appropriate, and some public education on what the side requirements are and the process in place. But in the end, I think everybody's looking for a better overall sidewalk condition citywide and how to get that. I promise this review will be short. It is only this slide, but as we were going through it with, when I've discussed some of these with other people, it seemed like it needed to be sort of restated to see where we're at today. So, first and foremost, in the code, the code is fairly specific. The duty to keep the sidewalks in repair and clean are the responsibility of the property owner. There are no exceptions in the code, okay? Tree-related, street tree-related, that's not in the code. It's, that's all part of the second item, which is this 1994 council motion, which established discounts for property owners in maintaining those sidewalks in repair, which include street tree-related discounts. If it's homeowner occupied, get a discount, or low income, there's a discount. The other, the last thing is something that actually came up in some of our staff meetings is that this part of the program is the most intensive part, time-intensive part of our street and sidewalk program. Last year, we worked with over 100 residents to repair sidewalks and drive aprons within the city. These are individual sites, individual discussions with each resident. They're getting a, they're getting a notice in the mail saying they're owing $200, $2,000 that they're not expecting. So, these are each individually assessed, individually notified. They call in with questions. My staff does a good job in spending time with them and stepping them through the process, and they understand that, you know, anytime we spend with the property owners is, is needed, we spend that, okay? And when you have over 100 of these, you're spending probably two to three hours, which each of these bills. It's much easier for us to spend a half a million dollar paving streets than it is to spend half a million dollars fixing individual sidewalks that are getting charged back to the property owners. So, that being brief, some of the things that have been done, we talked about a citywide evaluation of the sidewalks. We contacted several consultants to see how much it would cost to do a citywide evaluation. Most places, places have not seen a citywide evaluation of sidewalks comprehensively done before. One company's refused to do it because there isn't anything really set for it. The other one did a nice job coming up with a proposal, but it was around $50,000, which would be what it would take for us to replace one long block's worth of sidewalks or a couple other short blocks worth of sidewalks, and we didn't think that that was a good investment of our money. If the council says otherwise, we'd be glad to help move forward with this, but this is something that isn't a one-time deal. It is, you do it once and you come back to it two or three years from now. So, what we did instead was to do a sort of an internal review, which started in July. A member from our staff was, is walking all 111 miles of sidewalk in the city and noting any locations where there's a two-inch or higher trip hazard, sort of focusing in on that versus all the other laundry list of things that are possible with sidewalks. He's 80% done and still working on it now.
How many miles, how many pounds did he move?
This person, right? They choose.
Yes, absolutely. So, we're working on that, we're going to try to assess how that works, you know, and see, help give us some key information on how we progress in the future with that. Central Maintenance has been doing temporary repairs and talking to Brad. He said there were very few calls in 2018 for issues that they received specifically, but they have gone through and put in asphalt wedges in different places. They're sort of incorporating it into the same time that they fill potholes in the street. They have the same material out there. So, it's sort of this, it's similar to with streets, you know, a short-term gap to keep things functioning better. An example, he said, would be at Town Hall 2, an asphalt wedge was placed just recently where a tree has upheaved the sidewalk. So, and actually, looking back, a Tree City Bulletin article was, was written that I did in December, right before the January council meeting, sort of explaining the whole process of sidewalk maintenance and the joint responsibility that we have as the city administration and the residents and the property owners, so. So, that being said, let's move to the two pilot programs that we're going to present today to try to address what we thought was heard in that previous meeting, where we talk about having a more responsive, being able to address complaints quicker, sort of more owner-directed programs versus citywide-directed programs. So, what we, as we went through this discussion, it became obvious that there's some goals of the current program that have been set up that are showing up on the screen there. These goals sort of evolved over time, since I said it was 1994 when the last discounts were brought up. So, these goals, it's been refined as one, is to maximize the owner's discounts that have been provided by council, to make a cost-effective program as we have 111 miles of sidewalks to maintain. If it costs us $6 a square foot, which is the price that we're getting, we can maintain more than the cost that we got to do one small piece of sidewalk out by Pizza Fire in the parking lot. We did a part of that. It cost us $12 a square foot for that one little piece. So, making a cost-effective use of our money, bidding this together with other concrete work, doing it in a small, in a localized area in an effort to get the cost per unit down so that we can get more done. There's a management benefit to the owners of the current program. We do, we do the work. We hire the contractors, we run it, there's no permits needed, we help move that forward. And the current program tries to get a neighborhood impact done when we do a project. We don't just do a complaint. On Aaron Drive, there was someone who had complained in 2010, a piece of bad sidewalk. All you had to do was walk two properties over, there was another piece of bad sidewalk and another. Those didn't call in. We wouldn't do just the one, we would do the whole block so that the whole neighborhood's been fixed and it's walkable. However, that current program is not owner-directed because we don't have enough money, and there isn't enough money in the, in the city coffers of evil to then do one block every time someone complains. As the example that we gave before, Rockwell, there was one complaint, it cost $40,000 to do one block of sidewalk work, so. Now, that wasn't you that complained, no. So, these next two options are, that we're going to discuss, basically give an option to make it more owner-directed, but it takes away from some of the other checkmark goals that are up there, so. I'll step through them. The first one is this pilot sidewalk request program. It is definitely property owner directed, basically if someone calls in, we would put that into the next available contract to be bid. We would set a maximum budget on any of these pilot programs as we start. They would still get the city management of the project, they'll get the benefit of a bulk discount because we're bidding hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of work versus $2,000 worth of work. We may or may not charge for mobilization and restoration. I should step, take a step back and say, these pilot programs are concept right now, and any details have to be worked out if council would like us to progress moving forward with them. So, there's some questions that'll be in there. The biggest trade-off here is that there wouldn't be any owner discounts, and that we would have one property per owner per year so that not one owner can then take all the resources set aside to do all their properties throughout the city. So, how it would work, someone would call in, we would receive a request. If it's not the owner, we'd add it to the, to our, our list of things to do. If it was the owner, we would, the staff would review the request. If it's a, if the request is in an area where all the sidewalk is bad, we'd add it to the future list. But if it's an isolated area, we would estimate it, how much it would cost to do, we'd notify the owner. At the end, at that time, the owner decides, well, if they decline to go with it, they have the two options that they have today, which is either A, they can pull a permit for $20, have a contractor fix it, or we can put it on our future list. If the owner accepts, we'd add it to the upcoming year program, we would take a deposit of some amount. We would then complete the work and either bill the property owner of the balance or reimburse them the balance depending on how the prices came in that year for us.
Oh, yes.
So, basically on this one, the owner pays for the work, basically?
That's correct.
Well, then what's the difference between this and them getting it done themselves?
They would get the bulk discount that the city does because we're bidding out a lot more work, and also the city would manage the project versus the owner managing the project.
Well, so six, so typical general price is $6 a square foot?
That's what we're getting, yes.
And how much is a block usually? How many square feet?
Typically, you're seeing five foot by four foot, four foot by six.
So, it's $120 bucks to replace it typically?
Mm-hmm. That's the price that we're getting, the bulk price. I understand what was done, a very small piece across the street was $12 a square foot.
Right. So, that was 240, then?
Well, typically, we're not replacing one block. Usually, when, if, when we would go-
The city's not, but typically, the average homeowner wants one block replaced in front of their house or something. I mean, I mean, the way that the city has always been doing it before is when a street gets redone or curves or something get redone, then the sidewalks get bundled into that. And I thought-
That's what I understand.
That's typically how you do it, when you're redoing a street, you do the sidewalk.
Yes, we're doing the sidewalks.
Right.
But typically, any tree heaving, it doesn't just heave one block. There's, several blocks have to be done to transition it to that at time, so.
Right, because I, I thought we had put the extra money into the budget to do the spot repairs, to not bundle it in with the redoing of the streets, right?
We do have that one.
The, the other problem that residents have a little bit with this too is that if you only have a 20-square-foot area, it's very difficult to get a contractor to even come out and look at it. So, while we got it for $12 out here, it's probably going to be considerably larger because the area is so much smaller. The mobilization for them to come up and do a small area is really difficult for a homeowner to get. We find homeowners calling us all the time for their open areas, you know, they either need to be redone or they want to do something to them, and they just can't find contractors to come out. So, this would probably help some of those situations as well.
Well, big contractors, though, right? You can find a handyman to come out and pour your concrete pour if you want. Is there a requirement by the city to have certain specifications for people to do it?
There's a requirement that the contractor be certified in the city before they do any work, yes. Right, Bridget?
Yeah, they have to basically be registered contractors, and it's the, anyone that's got full permit in the city has to be registered.
Except the homeowner can do it themselves, correct?
Yeah, if the homeowner does it themselves, they do not have to register correctly.
Now, if the homeowner does it themselves, do they get the discount reimbursement also?
That, you're, you're jumping to option two. In this, in this option, in this option here, it basically maintains the city will manage the process, the city will perform the process, but to get your work done sooner, you forego the discounts. And this is providing different options available to, to homeowners.
Sooner, maybe three years sooner?
No, as in the next year that we do a bid, so it would be typically the next year.
This would be in a year, then?
Typically, yes.
So, they pay for everything and they get it done within a year?
Approximately that, yes.
Right, okay.
John? Jim, isn't it true that if a homeowner wanted to do one or two or three blocks, even if they could find a contractor, the contractor would either have to hand mix it, or the mini charge for the load would probably cost them more than they did half the street?
Yes. Mm-hmm, that's correct. And one of the questions in this option here that we have is, you know, whether to permit somebody to go through this process even if it's one bad area in the midst of a whole bunch of bad ones. Because at that point, we could still do it, it doesn't make it more walkable for the whole block, but maybe it would spur neighbors on to do the similar type of thing, so. Those are, that's a, we can do it during those times as well. As with either of these pilot programs, we would take, we would keep track of certain measurements. First off, how many complaints were addressed? What percent of people called in actually used the program? What's the public's response to it? Did our cost per square foot go up unreasonably so? We don't expect it would relative to the amount of work we're putting out normally, but it might go up some. And then the last one is how much time it would take to manage that.
Roger.
Yes.
So, just to be clear, this is like something that somebody would want to do voluntarily. The futures list is something that basically you, you're going to do a street, and anything that's not caused by a city tree or whatever is going to be paid by the, the property owner, right? So, it's a voluntary, you can do it in advance, or you can, the city will do it on its own schedule, but it's still, it's like you will be paid, you will be charged.
Not, 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 not exactly that. It's not exactly that simple. The program is, is very, there's a lot of nuances in it. First off, we do fix street sidewalks without fixing the street, okay? Even outside of the, the, the program that Tracy was talking about. The second thing is, there are still discounts that the homeowner gets if we're doing, for whatever reason, even if it's not tree-related. There's the, if you're the owner occupied, you get 50% off. If it's low income, owner occupied, you get 100%. So, there's still other discounts that are part of it as well, so it's not necessarily that, it's just another option for them paying it to do it themselves.
So, about the futures list, though. So, say somebody really wants to fix a condition in front of their house. It's a city-caused problem, like the city tree-caused problem. They have to go on the futures list, or they can fix it themselves, but though, yeah, I'm still confused by this, you know? You see what I mean? This has to be really explained very carefully to people.
Right. So, if, if someone wants to fix the sidewalk in front of the house, like Mrs. Burke called us up, and it's obvious that it's next to a street tree, by the current ordinances, it's their responsibility to do it. They can hire a contractor, pull a $20 permit, contract put down a bond, do the work, it'll be inspected, bond will be returned, and it'll be done. That's one option. The other option is to let us know. We will put it on the list, and as we get to working in that area, we'll make sure that those areas get picked up as we do it. Those are the two options that sit today, so. This would be a third option to be a little more owner-directed, that it could get- So, this would be a third option to be a little more owner-directed, that it could get done quicker. It would still be managed by the city. They may potentially get a cheaper price because the city's bundling in with their, with our three hundred thousand dollar program or whatever it is for that year. There would, no permit would need to be pulled, no contractor would need to be hired. It's just another route to get it done in a, a different way.
And this would be good citizens that would step forward to want to do this?
Yes.
There's no like, there's no, like, we have this ordinance that we apparently are not really enforcing.
No, actually, we are enforcing it, it, to, to a degree. Remember, to enforce the ordinance, we have to follow through with actually doing the work, which means we have to set aside money to do, which we're currently doing at a rate of this year of, of a half a million dollars in twenty eighteen. So, we can, we can't enforce the ordinance unless we're willing to do the second part of the paragraph which says, we're going to go and get the work done and then build it up for it.
Yeah, I was wondering, who holds the liability regarding where we are with the sidewalks? I personally tripped in the last, in the last two weeks on sidewalks that have, that are, have a, a shift in them or, and I was wondering exactly, and I know that we own it as a city, but we require other people to maintain it, the people, the residents to retain them. My question is though, again, like I was saying, who, who is liable after we've been notified that this situation exists? Who then holds the liability on it?
I'll tell you what happened. I, yeah, and then Hope can jump on. It's not-
It's not the city, yeah. City is immune from liability from, from sidewalk issues. So you, you would sue the property owner?
The property owner?
Mm-hmm.
Even though the property owner doesn't actually, that's right-of-way?
Correct.
And that's, okay.
And just, Robin, just so you know, this, that exact situation occurred before Hope came here about three years ago. We knew of an area that had a problem, it was on the list, someone tripped, they sent a letter to the city, said they were going to sue us for it. Jim Silver responded back in a letter stating, A, it, our ordinance, so it's the property owner's responsibility, B, it was an obvious hazard that they could see, and, and he never even got to the point that there is an immunity from the city to some degree. So, and the letter went out and we'd never heard everything since then about it. So, we've, we've experienced exactly what you said and we're not liable for that. And that's part of the reason the ordinance says it is. I guess the other thing I would explain, would say is, i- in my experience, the right-of-way, especially the part between the curb and the, the end of the right-of-way line, is a joint area that is to the benefit of the property owner as well as the city. And we both maintain it and use it in a joint fashion. It's not a hard line that says, on this side, it's the property owner, on this side, it's the city. The property owners' mailboxes are in the right-of-way and they need to be in the right-of-way. The property owners mow in the right-of-way. The city doesn't come and mow through the right-of-way. The city though, plows the streets because we're the best suited to plow the streets. So it's a joint area for both the city government as well as the people who are the city create and use and maintain. And, and it seems to change over time, and we may be at one of those times where it changes some by presenting a couple of different options that would be available for this. So, if you don't mind, I will go to the second option. And then we can come back to any of these. Just sort of back to this table really quick and then we'll go to the second option. As, as I think Councilwoman Wallach pointed out, we're trading the discounts for the ability to dictate where and how fast the, the work gets done. We don't know if it's going to have effect on the cost of our program, we don't think it will. And as far as the neighborhood impact, if we hold the line that we're not going to do a bad area within a whole bunch of bad sidewalks, then we'll have neighborhood impacts with it. But if we don't, then that would be sort of neutral to that goal. So the next option is a pilot sidewalk owner reimbursement program. It seemed a byproduct of what happened in nineteen ninety-four when they created the discounts, it actually created a disincentive for a property owner to actually want to fix their sidewalk as per the code because they could call and say, I need this fixed, how can I get it done? Well, either you could do it yourself or you could let us know and when we get to it, we'll do the work and we'll charge you less. So most owners would look at that and say, well, unless I'm really fearful of getting sued, I'll just wait. And we've had experiences where people have told us that. And the hard part is, we can't give them a timeframe of when we're going to get to it because most of it is pretty far along. So this program would, would try to incentivize doing it themselves. This would be property owner managed versus city managed, and it can be very responsive, it can be done as fast as the, the owner requires, desires to do it. We'd have to set a maximum budget and we, the owner discounts would apply to this. Basically, we would use the square foot cost that we received from the year before as how much, if they were going to fix a hundred square feet of sidewalk and we paid six dollars a square foot, take that fifty percent, so they would get three hundred dollars back from the city after the job's done. So how that one would run through, someone would call in, if it's not the owner, it would go onto the list, if it is the owner, we would review it. If we concur that there's a problem, which I would say most of these would be, we would provide an estimate of how much we would reimburse based on our prices from the year before. At that point, the owner can decide whether they decline to use it and it goes back on the list, or if they accept, the owner completes the work, probably with a registered contractor from the city, they pull a twenty dollar permit. Upon final inspection, we would reimburse the owner the amount that we would have paid if it was done as through our program. In speaking with an engineer this morning who used to work in Ravenna, they did something similar like that at one point in time. And when I say one point in time, I'm talking thirty years ago. So this option provides the owner the discount, but the trade-off is that instead of the city managing it, the owner manages it, okay? And they can do it in any fashion they want that meets the current permit requirements. So we maximize owner discount, the, it is owner-directed, but we're forsaking the ability for the city to manage the work for them, so.
What's different? I mean, this is what I thought we always had. I mean, is this, the owner gets reimbursed fifty percent just generally? I mean, isn't that the nineteen ninety-four thing only applied to tree heaves and this applies to everything?
No, the biggest difference in this is, the nineteen ninety-four council motion has, when the city does the work, the property owner gets the discount. In this case, we're basically saying, the property owner does the work and then we will reimburse them the discount.
I thought it was always like that.
No.
And you allocate a certain amount of dollars per year per budget for that?
Correct.
What would be an estimate?
Where we're suggesting for both of these together to start at thirty thousand dollars and to see how it goes.
What does thirty thousand dollars get you in terms of one or two blocks per house? Because that's typically what seems to happen. Do, when I say, you know, a block of a sidewalk?
Uh huh. Um, it's really hard to estimate that way, but I would say like, going back to, you would, you would get probably a half a city block done of all the typical problems in the area. Like, if someone came to us and say, hey, I want to, this is all the details we have to work out. If you say you want us to pursue it, we're going to, we'll look at it. Say a property owner says, I want that tree fixed area, but ten feet away, there's another problem, but it's on their dime and they don't want to fix it. We'd probably say, no, you need, we need to do the whole property frontage, not maybe every part of it, just every bad part of it. So there's, there's got to be some negotiation compromise in that, in an agreement of what needs, what work needs to be done. So, as, as Councilman Kuhar said, doing one piece, a couple of blocks where there's a tree heave may exist and there actually are in front of your house, I believe, that would probably cost about a thousand bucks, maybe twelve hundred dollars, to call a contractor out to do it directly. Whereas if we're doing it with our program, it's closer to the four hundred dollar part because they have already mobilized their crews, they're already working all throughout the city in, in areas. And some of the other costs are rolled off into the mobilization and the other thing is part of the whole. Did I answer your question?
I, well, I think so. So, I mean, in most simple terms, you could get thirty houses done if they had, if they had a heaving sidewalk because of a tree somewhere.
Yes, I would, yes, absolutely. Or more.
And, and, but then you were, your comment was, we would probably do the, you'd prefer to do a whole block if there's problem pieces there, but the problem therein lies getting the other homeowner to want to be part of the program and-
That's, that's correct. And, and like I said, that's an option. That's a big red question mark whether we want to do that or not. With this second program, we didn't have that. You know, we're not going to stop any homeowner from going and replacing their sidewalk and if they go and fix the problem as is in the code, we should think that they would go ahead and get reimbursed for it. And we can make it the same with the other one too, if that's the desire, and see how it goes. I, I see a program like this morphing over time.
Well, if, if I may, why couldn't you do both? Why, why couldn't we, why couldn't we say, let's designate thirty thousand dollars for a owner-directed program? And then on the other hand, we've got this option over here where you call, you know, based on the first option, where are you going to get a better price and kind of-
Yes. We agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could have put those two tables together and said, we can do it all this way.
But you wanted me to look really smart, right? Hey, I, I'll get you tomorrow.
There you go, thank you.
I already thought of that.
One for you tonight.
Same, same question. Why can't we do both? People like choices.
We're saying, we're saying, we're going to give you, we're going to give you four choices, the two that exist today and two potential additional ones. The question is just, I mean, that's what we're proposing. I mean, these are all options.
I'm totally comfortable calling, you know, a company, getting the work done and, you know, and then getting their, their reimbursement.
Yes.
Other people, hey, you know, I'm, I know that it's going to cost less because of the city. You can get kind of maybe given that kind of estimate perhaps, and then it just, you know, it'll be done within a year and I don't have to lift a finger. I would like that.
Yeah, I don't know if you remember, the last time we talked about sidewalks, have you given any more thought to putting, I don't know how to explain, a pool together of people that have small sidewalk repairs that they want to do, putting those names into a pool and having a pool of small contractors willing to repair those at a maybe a slightly escalated price, where they could come in and if you've got ten houses on the list, that would keep their many from having a many, and they could come in and do all ten of those at one time?
I, I think that would be part of the details we work through as we come through and do this program to create that list of things that need to be done, the list of, of locations that need to be done. So that's more into the method of executing the work versus than actually what options they are available. The other thing that we have to do is, we have, we have to make sure that we have at least a competitive bid environment. One is a governmental entity to protect the resources from the public, two is just to get the best price, so.
If I, if I remember correctly, there was some question whether anybody wanted to do the small jobs and a lot of the small contractors are excluded from the big jobs because they don't have the manpower to do it. And this would give an opportunity for small contractors to compete in a certain area of the same field.
Yes.
Is it not correct?
Yes, no, that is correct.
I made a question out of it.
You know, I was wondering, what kind of timeline are we looking at in people paying for the improvements or the, the repair of the sidewalks? I mean, do they have to have all the money upfront, they break it down, put it on their taxes? What kind of method are we going to be requiring that?
That was one of the details that we were going to have to work through if council would like us to move forward with both, one or both of these. I think for the first option that we talked about to move it up, I, I would recommend that we give them the estimate of the full cost that it would cost to do it and that they would have to pay that as the deposit. And if it costs a little less, we'll reimburse them. If it costs a little more, we'd send them a bill. It's no different than we do now. And in the second option, the homeowner's fronting the money anyways because they're hiring the contractor and doing the work. Or if they're a very aggressive owner, they are doing the work themselves. This doesn't preclude that from happening, as Bridgette said, but they can still do the work themselves.
Yeah, so this, you keep saying homeowner. Does this apply to rentals too? I know, I mean, the worst, the worst ones in my neighborhood are typically the rentals. What do we do to incentivize them to participate?
So, the first option where it's the, the owner request program, that one would probably be more conducive to a commercial property because they get very little discounts from the city based on the nineteen ninety-four motion, so.
So, so put it together with the other city work that's being done and pay the discount price that the city gets?
Correct.
The bulk, so they're eligible to participate in this?
That's the, yes, they are. In the second one, the, the second option is probably not going to be as conducive to them because they don't get as much of the discounts as especially a low-income owner-occupied residential structure, so.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. So, so rental property owners can participate in this in order to get a sidewalk done in-
A more timely fashion.
However, will only agree to do that one time a year for, like, if they have multiple properties?
Correct.
Gotcha. So that's a limitation.
So then if a owner occupied decides to replace their sidewalk, then do you have a list that they can get from you or, because you said it has to be a bonded, certified, all this stuff, unless they do it themselves?
We do not currently maintain a list, but, yes, Bridgette, you-
We don't have to be certified to do that kind of work, we have to be licensed with the city, so it doesn't require social certification. But we want to have a permit and we need to, and a bond because we need to make sure that it's inspected and installed to the city standards. You can't just have your Uncle Joe go out there, you know, put some forms in there for a block, which we have happened by the way, a lot. So we need to make sure that there's precautions in there for smaller contractors, but they are still held accountable so that they can be inspected by the city.
But you can do it yourself?
Yes, but they still have to have it, they have to pull the permit so we know about it.
Right, they got to get a permit, but a person can do it, so Uncle Joe can do it in front of his own house.
If he pulls the permit and has it looked at, yes.
Uncle Joe can help you too.
If he's licensed.
No, he doesn't have to be, he doesn't need a license.
If, if the owner pulls the permit, I think is the difference.
If the owner pulls the permit, no registration needs, but it's really not.
So what if the owner doesn't know to pull a permit and they do it, then what happens?
We've actually had that happen.
Yes.
Um, Jim Silver advised us to basically note that things weren't inspected. We had separate driveway aprons and the sidewalks. And Jennifer Barone, an adult engineer, puts a notification out to them that it wasn't inspected. And if typically it can't be resolved, if they go out and inspect and verify certain things, then there's something that's filed and attached to the property.
Right.
Sidewalks can usually be inspected because you can go down by the grass. We have issues with driveway aprons where we're not sure exactly what they did under it.
Right. Most- Right. Most, most sidewalks we could deal with after the fact. The hardest part is if they built it incorrectly. Sorry.
That was basically my question, was my, just a concern over whether having the homeowner, if I did a sidewalk, it would be unfortunate. So I just want to make sure that people like me aren't... I don't want people like me to be empowered to fix their own sidewalk. That's my concern.
I wonder if I could get fined for overbuilding.
If I'm the one that does wish this, what happens is they do find, I know a guy, when they hire the guy, the company...
I would be afraid of that, too. You know what? That's bad for properties.
And the homeowner doesn't realize that they were supposed to be getting a permit, so this could be inspected and checked. And so then, on the notice, the homeowner is done and then somebody from the city discovers it and then the homeowner is kind of in a...
So that leads me to, I've got, to just two real quick ones. How long would you like to do, what is the timetable for the pilot program?
I, I would do it annually. I, what, what we would do, if you guys would like us to move forward, we'll go back, set up some of the policy guidelines to get some of the details. Come back with an appropriation amendment to appropriate the money and then set us, and then work it through this year, which the appropriation would last. And then see how it goes and come back and report how well it worked out.
So then my, my follow-up then to that is, if you find that there are more people interested in a particular version of it, do you plan on scaling back the other options? Or is it really unnecessary to scale it back? We can kind of...
We, we will do whatever works best as we proceed and see what happens with council's direction.
Like, there isn't a, a single option that you, you very much would prefer in terms of, like, quality of work or the resources that you think, okay, so?
No, we, we...
Any one of these is okay?
Yes, and we believe we can enforce the quality of work whether the contractor pulled and we go inspected or we hire the contractor and we inspect it there, so.
So then you said there were four options. So there's these two that were presented to us and then the other two were, they just complain about it. It goes on the list and when it gets done, it gets done?
That's one.
The third one. And then the other one was, the last one was...
Is what it currently exists now, which they just do it themselves.
And that's, and they pay for it fully?
Yes, which practically speaking, more than likely, they'll go with the last option, which is they at least get some reimbursement for it if they do it themselves.
So there wasn't any, I thought currently if they replace it now, they got a 50% reimbursement?
No. Can, Roger, I wouldn't, I believe the people from Aaron Drive, Mrs. Burke and Mr. Hamula, came here to be able to tell about their situation, so.
I want to make sure, is anyone from council have any more questions for Jim before we go to the audience? Okay, then go to the audience and go up and name and address.
Boy, what I do. Hi, everybody. My name is Elizabeth Burke. I'm in Farm Burke Two on Aaron Drive in the cul-de-sac, dead ends into my yard. And this is my neighbor, Mr. Hamula. First of all, I want to thank Jim. He has been unbelievable in answering, coming out, spending a lot of time, talking to me and my neighbor, keeping us informed on their emails, et cetera. And also Gwen Rosenberg, who showed up the day after I sent all of you a copy of the petition that my neighbors signed at the end of the block. I'm retired, they're retired. You know, we both had hip replacements and we don't want to do the other side. Because our sidewalks are a mess. And partially because of trees that you guys put in, which I love. Anyway, I thought I would just take a second to read you because you all received a copy of this petition. It probably represents a conglomeration of what you would be hearing or he would be hearing on a regular basis as far as, you know, the kind of complaints that are going on. Basically, we said that we're residents of Aaron Drive who live at the bottom of the cul-de-sac. We've been experiencing walking difficulties, children playing and falling, moms, dads, grandmothers having problems pushing baby carriages or riding bikes because of the uneven and broken sidewalks. And because many of the residents are aging, wink, wink, and we have visitors who need help. We've had people who could not utilize their wheelchairs or walkers because our block does not even have the wheelchair access ramps. It's a problem. You know, we can get them out of the car, but we can't get them off the street. So, and I think that's a federal law, isn't it? Anyway, think about that. So we're requesting that can't replace or replace the sidewalks and mainly the creating that handicap ramp. We need that. So our cul-de-sac signed it and that's where Jim got involved and Gwen showed up the next day after you guys got a copy of it because we included photographs, et cetera. So I, he did send me a, a copy of that 94 policy that you guys had put into place, which said that you would pay 50% of anything that was done. And the other thing was that if trees caused damage, is that my understanding that the cost is picked up by the city? Is that my understanding? Okay, so right now, if I had the repairs done, Jim, and billed the city, would they pick up the cost? Is that how that would work?
If we implement this program, yes.
Okay, okay. So I would hope to heavens that you guys consider this because I think many of us, you know, are going to have this problem. Sidewalks don't last forever and it, it's a problem, at least in our neighborhood. And, you know, by the way, Aaron Drive and Farm Burke One and Two have no street lighting, but that's a whole other story. You know, we have 60 watt bulbs and a lot of people let them just, it's dark. So if you're walking at night or particularly on a night like this where there's a little bit of snow, you don't even see those cracks that are that big. It's not like you can say, oh, you should have seen it. You don't see it. So I think that's all I had to say. But again, I want to thank all the response we've gotten. And that just makes me feel good to be a Kent resident. Anyway, that's all my, anybody have any questions? Okay.
You satisfied with the...
Yeah, I am. Mm-hmm. Oh, here's the other question, Jim, and council. Let's say I pull in a contractor and I say, look, this is my frontage here. How much would it cost? And they say, $1,000. And 50%, if that is approved, would be, I would pay that contractor $1,000 and then I would bill the city for 500?
No.
No? How does that work?
Jim, would you like to? Here he comes.
We can trade. How I believe what we do, when you go to do the work, you'd contact us. We would go look at, agree with you what part would be done. And then we would give you a letter saying, this is how much you would get from the city if you did that work. Could it be based on the prices that we got the year before, which may be better for you, maybe not. So it would be 50% of the prices we would have paid prior to that.
Okay, so then I would, it would be my responsibility to get bids for that particular, I mean, to get a better price to match my benefit and yours. Okay, that makes more sense. Does that make sense to you?
Question for Jim. So Jim, you go out there, they want the whole sidewalk done, but there's only one section that has an upheaval.
At that point, we would say we would only part, do the part that had the upheaval as we're protecting the citizens' investments in the income tax dollars. So that's where there's got to be some agreement between the property owner and the city.
So it'd be our responsibility not to do a thing until we get it approved by you guys. Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, is the audience done? It's still their turn. All right, so then, can you reiterate the 1994 ordinance on, so 1994, if it's, the upheaval is done by the tree, the city pays for everything?
Thank you.
No, I know, the city tree that did it.
Okay, it wasn't an ordinance, a codi, it wasn't a codified ordinance. So you wanted specifically about the tree?
So because I know this, this person said that the city would, you said the city would pay 100% if it's caused by the tree, a city tree.
That's, yeah. So in 1994, it says, assistance we provide to the homeowner occupied properties in the amount of 50% of the cost of the improvement. Homeowner occupied properties falling within the city's income tax guidelines will receive assistance in the amount of 100% of the cost of the improvement. And then the, the tree one came in a follow-up, like a month or two later. So I don't have that with me here right now, but...
So then, back then, it did say that there's always been a 50% reimbursement for homeowners?
Understand that way, I just read you one part of the whole direction. But as it's come through over time, the reimbursements have been done when the cities perform the work. And that could have just been because at that point, we know it's been bid publicly and we got a good price. And we're saying that we can, we could still do that by, by reimbursing the price we would have got from the previous year's bid.
Will we make sure there's really good public education on this, very clear and...
We will try, yes. We will definitely spend the time with anyone calls in because, remember, this is all started by someone contacting us saying there is a sidewalk problem that they own that's in front of their property. It all starts there. So at that point, we can definitely work with each of them.
But we would put it out there, like in Tree City Bulletin. And then, you know, if there are questions, of course, clarify, but...
Yes.
Yes. So I would, I would not be surprised if there is a lot of interest quickly.
Robin?
Yeah. On Bowman Drive, we had a situation where this became an issue. But the neighbors actually sat down, got together as a group and then bid it out. They said a guy came out the next day or something, I don't know why he was out there, but he came out and they all decided to work together to deal with it. What is the possibility of the savings on a situation like that? How would they go about in being compensated if, in fact, something applied to them?
For that one, that would be the, the last option that I discussed. And basically, we would have to agree with each of the individual owners, what work they would be doing, we think would be reasonable to do. And then we would send them a letter, each of them, and then how they hired the contractor all together. That would be a great idea to get the best price. And then we would reimburse each of them based on their specific work done on their properties.
And the price.
And the prices from last year, from the last year that we bid.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, please. What Heidi was saying, I think it's kind of important that we are able to educate people regarding how this is done and how they could go about doing it in order to, you know, create a, a better situation with the sidewalk.
Sure. I can, I can see putting together some kind of a, a simple somehow flyer that, that people, yes, that it could, that we could, people could pass out. Council members would have, because we all get these questions all the time. So it's just going to take some time for us to put together these...
The four options.
With the four options, correct.
Yeah, so I had always thought that sidewalk heaves due to trees on city property were done by the city 100%. You say that's not the case.
I say that if we do the work, yes, we will pay for it 100%. What I, what it is not the case is the fact that it's not in the codified ordinances, that it's our responsibility to, that's, that's a discount provided by, by a council back in the 90s.
So then we could make it an ordinance that says, any sidewalks heaved by city trees, replaced by the city, the city will cover the cost 100%. But it gets done whenever it gets done.
Sure, I mean, you always have the option of changing that, but the dilemma is no different than it is today. It's all about the money.
Right.
I mean, the city's responsible for doing it, but it'll sit in the list for how many years before the city has, the, the small amount of money the city has every year by the time we get to it. And that's part of what we're trying to do here. Still have that option available, but Jim's giving you, giving the consumers some choices that might speed it up if, if, if speed is... So it's really a...
I'm just saying that something that I always thought was in the ordinance has not been in the ordinance.
Right.
That is correct.
It's a policy.
And I just wanted to say, can we make it official then? And I, and I understand what you're saying, too, but we have all these other options already, then.
John?
I'm always finding the pot and the kettle. So we have a sidewalk that's heaved up by a big tree that's on the city right away. Who cuts the tree down?
That's a great question, isn't it? That is a great question. And that we would bring our arborist in to come take a look at the tree. Because, and, and Pat, who handles our street and sidewalk program, deals with that every time we go to replace a sidewalk. Sometimes we save the tree, sometimes we have to take it down. It's all dependent on an individual basis, which is why the property owner and the city have to come to some agreement before we do it. Because in, in the end, there's some inherent risk. If we don't cut the tree down, it may heave again in a year or two, okay?
It may fall down because you cut the tap, right?
Or may fall down, right? So, but trees in the tree lawn do provide benefit to the property owner, to, to the, to the, to the, to the street driver. Helps slow traffic down by the canopy that's over the road. So it's a difficult situation. There's no right or wrong, but some agreement between the owner and the city would be, have to come into play.
So who pays for the tree to come down?
Good question. Right now, the city does. So I don't see, I, I don't see that changing unless the arborist says it doesn't need to come down. Then it would be on the property owner.
But it seems to me, I remember back when Bill Schultz was on council, though, that they dealt with that problem. And they said, if the sidewalk is heaved by a tree, they take the sidewalk out and they put another sidewalk in and it actually curves instead of being a rectangle.
We've, we, we've done that and sometimes that works well, sometimes that's not possible. Each, you, each one is exceedingly different. Like, there's, if you went down to Short Street, there is nothing that can be done to save the sidewalk and the tree at the same time. It, it's just completely impossible. But then you go into your neighborhood where the trees are not as mature as in the other area and you could save the tree. There's a bigger tree lawn on Aaron Drive, there's more room. We could probably, you know, pull the sidewalk, cut those roots and then put the sidewalk back in and the tree still would do well.
Actually, a neighbor just, she couldn't wait and she just had it done three houses up and they did, they worked around that tree. I mean, known as Tree City, I would hate, you know, I would definitely be talking to you about, is my tree coming down? You know, yeah, for sure.
John?
When we replant or when we originally plant, is it possible not to plant oak trees or things that get great, big and wide? And go narrow and tall instead?
Yes, that has been done and arbor, over time, arborists have done different things. But again, I caution that there are benefits to having a tree with a significant canopy. And it's whether or not we value those benefits versus the maintenance required of the sidewalk and the potential for the heaves that come by it. And it's, it's a site-by-site basis. A, a good example, if you go downtown, if you look at the adopter spots, we have much larger trees that are in that area because they have a bigger area to get water, the root system will still get fed and it's not going to heave. The sidewalks is bad. Conversely, if you go to the tree grates, you do not see the bigger sidewalk, trees in those areas. But, so you get the balance of shade from the tree and the sun at the adopter spots. The other ones are just a big bush in some regards and they don't give that same feel to the area. So each neighborhood is different and unique and we're trying to balance each one. As you can see, by Mrs. Burke here, each site's individually based and that's why this process takes so much time to do so that... this process takes so much time to do so that make sure that the residents, the homeowners, the property owners are content with what's done, so.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, Heidi.
Please, just to direct us to go ahead and move forward with these two.
I'd like to move to go forward with an option that includes both possibilities, so merge the tables together and bring it back to council. That's it?
Second.
With the emergency?
Oh, I don't know, I don't know. I can make an amendment to this, kinda, I can make an amendment to this or not too, but can we include officially that the sidewalks heaved by trees on city property will be replaced 100% by the city with no, you know, no, whatever? Like, it does right now unofficially, I'd like to make that official.
I'll second that also.
Okay, so let's vote on the amendment first, okay? All those in favor on the amendment by Tracy to include in the ordinance that the city will take care of any tree or sidewalk heave on the tree on the city's side of the property?
There's a discussion on that.
What's that? Well, we can have some discussion on that.
Do we have any idea what like, what kind of a cost or what we would be committing ourselves to if we would admit it, where, where's this motion?
The, it's...
It just goes on the list and gets budgeted?
It just goes on the list. You're not adding a cost.
What's that?
Just to make...
Okay, I just wanna make sure we weren't writing a big check.
No. So, we're voting on that motion, first of all, to add that to the original. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same say. Now, let's go back to Heidi's motion.
Amendment.
Amendment motion.
Has amended.
I'm sorry, amended motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same say.
Good job, Mr. Bowen.
Nice job, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
There you go. Yeah, we're glad you're here.